Order, but the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Openshooting Act, Texas Government's Code, Chapter 551. First, we will say our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everyone, may we sit. First up on our agenda is our roll call of members present. Mr. W. Gomez.
Here.
Ms. Maria Cruz-Redd.
Here.
Ms. Sean Glovier.
Here.
Ms. Maria Douglas.
Here.
And, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Serta.
Here.
And Ms. Felicia Mouldy.
Here.
Awesome. And Darrell Owens is here, so there is a full board. We are all present and no one is absent. At this time, we will move into Section 3, which is our public comments. We'll first see if there are any, anyone signed up. So there is no one signed up for any items that are on the agenda tonight. So we'll then go to anyone that signed up to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. If there's one signed up.
There's not.
So there are no public comments tonight at all. Okay, so that takes us all the way through Section 4 of our agenda, and we will next move to Section 5, which is special district recognition. So would you get Mr. Oak Thai and his family to come down? And Board, I'm gonna ask if you will, like, sort of, you know, here as we do this presentation, if you'll move over here and take a picture with Mr. Oak Thai. So, at the last board meeting, we, uh, okay if you don't mind coming down and facing your family and face the families. So, uh, at the last board meeting, the Board took actions to rename our Performing Arts Center after you, sir. And Mr. Owens has given a brief, but I wanted to present this to you. Thank you, Josh, for, uh, Huggable Architects, Josh Kowdor, Huggable Architects, for doing this rendering to sit there and they, so you can have a preview of what it's gonna look like and when we get it done, but, uh, right now, you can hang that up and you have a memorization of it. So basically, it says the Earl K. Oak Thai Performing Arts Center. And so, so he's already said everything, but I'm just gonna go ahead and see what I have to say.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Oak Thai, on behalf of the Kennedale ISD Team of Eight, all of us, our students, our staff, our community, it is our honor to present the representation to you of the Earl K. Oak Thai Performing Arts Center. And this is what it will look like. Our district is very fortunate to have individuals like you and what you've given so much to our students and to help in their success. Our students were fortunate to have you for, uh, in their lives and for your experience and your mentorship for so many years. So the impact that you have on so many will be commemorated now with your name on that very building out front where you spent so much of your time giving to and influencing others. Once again, thank you for your dedication and service to our district. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much. If I may introduce my family.
Yes.
This is my wife, Sherri Oak Thai, my youngest son, Ryan Oak Thai, my oldest son, Jordan Oak Thai, and Jordan's girlfriend, Courtney Cannon. Is that okay?
Let me say a little bit more. I know, uh, I think we saw your last concert, and you talked about how much you sacrificed with your family to give to other families, and so I think this shows that sacrifice.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So if you don't mind, after she takes these pictures. Yeah, I'm gonna move out and let you take a picture with your family, and then we're gonna do this.
Oh, okay. I know this. You're gonna make your own earphone. Make your own earphone as well if you will.
Yeah, of course.
So you're some of the...
One, two, three. Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Oak Thai, if you don't mind, if you step over with the Team of Eight, and let us take a picture of you and your rendering.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. So grateful.
That's a great friend. It's a real friend.
This way?
Is that hilarious?
Down?
Yeah.
One more. Two more. One, two, three. All right, one, two, three. Thank you. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you for this honor.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll bring you back out front of us. You got a picture now, but we'll bring you back and get a picture out front of us.
Board, Mr. G, thank you so much for this honor. I can't tell you what it means to myself and my family and for me personally, from the bottom of my heart, thank you with so much gratitude. Words can't express my gratitude for this honor. Just an honor of a lifetime. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and continuing with our special district recognitions, I'm going to turn over to Mr. G for the Paul Awards.
All right. So... All right, so for this last month's Novembers, 2023, our Paul Awards. Start with the high school. At the high school, we have Sarah Humphrey, Carol George, Melanie Grubbs, Kelly Wilson, Christie Hollett, Matt Skank, Marissa Church, Connor Borderland Ross, Robert Irwin. At Arthur Early Childhood Center, we have Laura Wells, Rosa, Rosa, Rosalia Consonnavall, Rosie, I'm just calling her Rosie, Rosie Sandoval, Maggie Inlow, Ashley Alexander. At the Wildcat Success Center, we have Frankie Bryson. Kennedale Junior High School, we have Lydia Daniels, Jessica Gilbert, Megan Lockwood, Stevie Moore, Rhonda Smith, Sarah Sepphal, Michaela Strum, and Brittany Cox. And at Patterson Elementary, we have, uh, Tanishala Wilson, Rosemary Reeves, Terry Moore, Connie Parks, Evelyn Ish, Deion Branish, Gary Ball, Alicia Allen, April Brooks, Priscilla Hightower, Tanya Widner, Debbie Lavador, Kara Bowman, Liz Bittar, Eric Lockwood. At Delaney Elementary, we have Trisha Poore, Kim Casburn, Kathy Nevins, Landon Kilpatrick George, Kim Casburn. And at Central Administration, we have DeeDee Grimes, Tammy Duomo, Jessica Meyer, Ashley Sawatsky, Carrie Shue, Dr. Toya Keys, Jeremy Snyder. That's our Paul Awards for November. I'll say this. DeeDee Grimes just got to Central Admin, and she's already getting Paul Awards. DeeDee's, DeeDee's very special as a governor of the district. All right, and that takes us through that, so now we're moving to number six.
Okay, well, next we'll go to Section 6, which is our consent agenda. So all the items listed under this subheading will be adopted with one motion unless they are removed from the consent agenda by a trustee for consideration. Okay? Now, no one has mentioned anything about removing anything, uh, therefore entertain a motion.
I move to approve all items under the consent agenda.
Motion by Mr. Glovier.
Second.
And second by Ms. Douglas. All in favor of the consent agenda being adopted, let it be known by the sound aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Okay. Uh, next, we're going to make an adjustment with our agenda. I know it says Section 7, but I think we want to move to Section 8A, uh, 8A only, up to, uh, this particular point before we do, uh, number 7. So if we can go to 8A, uh, and that would be the, uh, discuss and consider accepting funds from the Kennedale Education Foundation for the Fall of 2023 grant awards.
Trying to get them back home. Got other things they gotta do, so.
Good evening, Board. I'm Andrew Markowski. I'm the president of the Kennedale Education Foundation, and...
Kelly Hale, board member.
Uh, and so, uh, you know, the Education Foundation, you know, we work closely with the district, and we, you know, provide some of these, um, provide grants to some of these teachers that request the grants for items that they're requesting to directly impact the way they want to do education. Uh, so, uh, this year, we funded about $22,000, uh, worth of grants, and I think it's about a total of about 15. So I know it's in your packets. Uh, if there's any questions y'all have about some of them, kind of talk about them. Um, one of the things that, um, we did approve, um, at the high school level for the anatomy class, one of the projects that I liked was, it's called We Heart Anatomy, so it's a way that they can, uh, conduct some educational instruction within the classroom in a way that's kind of hands-on and interesting. Uh, another one that was at the high school level was a box full of nature, and apparently these are some terrariums that they're going to utilize, uh, to kind of, I guess, show what things grow. Uh, and then, of course, we actually had another request for some programmable robots. Um, and then at Delaney, I guess they're liking some, some rhythm instruments, so we approved some, some drums and some other rhythm instruments. Um, so if you have any questions, we can...
So, so do you want to have any questions regarding any of the, uh, ones that we have in our work packet? Any of the projects?
They're gonna be so excited. We appreciate y'all so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This will require board action, so...
Board action.
So, with that in mind, I move to accept the donation of funds from the Kennedale Education Foundation as presented.
Motion by Mr. Glovier and second by Mr. Serta. All in favor of accepting the funds from the Kennedale Education Foundation, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I can ask, so the pride patrol, when are we looking at doing the pride patrol?
So I think we're looking at doing it the first week in December. We're having to wait until we come back after the break. It's kind of, our timeline kind of got pushed back a little, and there's a little delay this year, so we're looking at...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that one item was, uh, out of, uh, I'm sorry.
We'll go back to seven?
We're gonna go back to seven now, go back to our information-only section, which is, we'll start with 7A, which is the Kennedale ISD Gifted and Talented Program Update. Mr. G?
Ms. Mouldy will, uh, do that presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have in your board book the 2223 Gifted and Talented Annual Program Evaluation. It's something that we bring each year. Um, I'll walk you through a couple of highlights and then answer any questions that you have. So the, the board, the report, the evaluation report has three sections. The first section is just a little bit of background on the tool that we use to, uh, not only evaluate the program but also build it, and that's the GT State Plan, and a little bit about how we collaborate with, uh, campus and district leaders and parents to finalize evaluations. The second section is just some key information about last year's program under the six categories of the state plan, and you also have two documents that will give you more detail. One is the actual state plan, and then, I would say, 2019 is the most recent, and then you have an evaluation notes document where the program alignment was noted standard by standard by the committee. And then the last section, uh, the recommendations that we came up with to focus this year's work for the 2324 school year. Uh, a lot of them are related to just ongoing continuous improvement efforts that you've probably heard in years past, and then there were a couple of new initiatives this year related to K8, and that would be additional pullout minutes in elementary, and then a new course and updated curriculum at junior high. So I, I know there was a lot of information that you reviewed. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, uh, Ms. Mouldy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 7B will be our public hearing of schools' first report for the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. And Ms. West, please, uh...
Oh, Ms. West, we get a chance to...
For me to perform? So tonight, I have the 2223 First Rating, which is the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. This is actually based on, uh, 2122 data, is the, it's a year behind. And so the purpose of the financial accountability, excuse me, accountability rating system is to ensure that districts are held accountable for the quality of their financial management practices and achieve improved performance in the management of their financial resources. So they issue districts, you either pass or fail, and then, um, then you're rated on a four ratings. You're either an A, B, um, C, or F. So, um, I'm pleased to say that, uh, Kennedale passed, which is a great thing, and then we received, um, an above-standard achievement rating, which is a B. We want to be an A. There was, um, where we lost the points was because in the audit, there was a, um, a notice of, or a comment about the child nutrition funding having excess fund balance. It happened in a lot of districts because, um, the state paid, the government paid more and more money. It was hard to get items in. A lot of people had extra fund balance there, but that's one of the things on the first rating, um, that cost us the points that made it a B. But other than that, it was, it was a good, it was a good rating outside of that.
One point away from it is because we had too much fund balance in our child nutrition, which you wouldn't think would be a bad thing, but according to the government audit, it is.
Didn't we lose points for that last year?
I was gonna say, that's not the first time.
That feels familiar.
No, that wasn't last year's, no, sir. We got the full 10 points last year, and this year it was zero. It was two years ago after.
Okay.
It was.
I feel like we've had this conversation before.
Maybe two years ago. Yeah, they, they, they gave more funding than what schools can spend in child nutrition.
I think what we lost before last year was administrative salaries and...
For saving money.
So just reminding, uh, reminding me, you know, um, where do we rate last year?
Last year, it was, I, I believe it was an A. Last year, it was an A.
I think we were at like 93 points last year.
Yeah, last year, it was, uh, 96, and then this year, it was an 88. And the, um, the big drop was the 10 points. If you have a finding in your audit, you automatically get a zero for that, that line item, and that's worth 10 points.
Was that number 18? Because that's the one where I see the zero, but it, it talks about grants.
It is. It's number 18.
It is number 18?
Yes. So that's where the auditors, that it was free of any material, uh, noncompliance or grants, contracts, laws related to local, state, and federal funds. So it's if you have a finding in your audit.
Okay, and the finding was because of the child nutrition?
Because of the excess fund balance.
Gotcha.
Which there's worse findings to have than that.
And then number 19, I see five. Was there a 10 possibly there, too?
Um, that was a full five.
Okay, that's, that's a full five.
Yes, ma'am.
Where'd we lose the other two points?
I was gonna say... Um, I think it was...
Cost ratio, 13?
It's on number eight. The current rate of assets to current liabilities. It was, it was, um, the last year we received, no, that's where we gained. Last year was eight points.
Number 13.
And we gained two points there.
13.
Uh, there were, yes, number 13, there were, there's two points there available, and again, that's your function 41, your ratio of administrative costs, which happens a lot. Some of these are common that most districts face.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, we'll go to Section 7C, which is our tax roll summary. And we'll do that. We'll get Mr. Adams down here one more time before, uh, he escapes us. His last harassment.
Oh, yeah, that was even for a second there. This is a report that we get from the Tarrant County Appre, uh, Tax Office. Uh, the Tax Success Reflector sends us a report out, uh, once, uh, our values have been certified and we have adopted the tax rate. As you can see, total appraised value was two, 2,888,000, but the taxable part of that was only 2,172,000. We adopted a tax rate of a dollar 1375, and that would generate 22,693 dollars, 293,454.65 taxes. Uh, this changes every day. This was the date as of, uh, they ran it on November the 6th, which, but it was actually, uh, October 31st.
Question?
Yes, would you go through that again? Oliver.
Okay.
You said the total appraisals...
Total appraised value.
Right.
This is what the appraisal district...
Correct.
Sent over. Uh, 2 million, or 2,888,000. And some change.
Correct.
But the taxable value on that 2,888,000 was only 2,172,000.
Okay, so then where it says deferrals?
Where...
That's right below total appraisals, then total deferrals. It's at the top.
23, 3, 23 million.
Oh, deferrals. Now, I'm talking, now I'm seeing where you're at. Uh, those are on ag value. The land's worth so many thousands of dollars per acre, but we can only tax it on 75 or 80 dollars.
Okay.
Maybe a hundred dollars now. But that, that's ag used land that's within the district.
Okay, and then the levy? The total levy?
Yes, 22 million. That's taking the taxable value and multiplying it by our tax rate.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any additional questions for, um, or even before he gets out of here? I want to thank him for all this, uh, time and, and his, uh, commitment to the district. I don't know who's leaving again.
Uh, he's, he's leaving December. We'll have one more board meeting.
Yeah, we got one more board meeting. This is next to the last.
We'll save the water balloons for that particular occasion.
For December, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to Section 7B's Construction Update, which I am anxious to wait in here.
Any board members, uh, pretty brief tonight. I believe you have a schedule in your package. Uh, I think we're, Mr. G's passing the torch to us to begin giving you monthly updates on the status of bond program. We've crafted a, what we tend to call a master schedule, which is somewhat fluid. Uh, Mr. G and Ms. Mode are on me almost daily about when are we gonna do this, when are we gonna do that? And as we get the contractors on board, we begin to close contracts, do different things, this thing will begin to take a little better shape, and we've tried to identify the major components of the bond program, and when they will begin to, to, uh, be implemented over time. We've included some things in this because it is a working document for us. You'll see some things highlighted in yellow under Schedule with some dollar figures below. We do that for Mr. Adams and Ms. West so that we can begin to demonstrate to them when we're going to need some cash in the bank, so we can execute contracts, uh, as, as designs get completed and bid doc, and bids, and pricing comes in on various projects. So this will sort of be our management tool. We've tried to tag that to specific dates throughout the year, uh, so that they can begin to manage their investments. Uh, I think you guys are doing pretty well on that with your bond proceeds, uh, but as we begin to encumber those funds with the construction contracts, that, some of those funds will need to be available on a regular basis, and so that will, uh, you know, affect how they manage their investment strategies. But as we get Steel Freeman under contract, uh, we get ABG under contract, and our designs continue to evolve, uh, we'll be able to address some challenges that we might see, but also, I think, find some opportunities, and that can have an effect on the count, on the schedule. So we'll present that to you each month, along with a budget summary of where we're at with everything. Uh, we are just about there with the, to have the website ready to launch. Some of the things you're gonna see tonight are gonna be the first images of schematics of how the high school's coming along next month. We plan to bring the junior high to you. Uh, those things will be put out there for the community at large to see and that kind of thing. But, uh, as we get deeper into this, these, these presentations will become a little more detailed, we have a lot of information, but that information will also be accessible to you on the website on virtually a daily basis to see progress photos, uh, milestones, things like that for each one of the projects. Once we get in, we'll start tearing things up and making it look pretty, but, uh, I just wanted to share that schedule with you because that is sort of the foundational element for how we work with consultants, work with the contractors, but is also work with your business office on how we effectively manage your bond funds moving forward, so. That's all I got for you. Mind any questions?
A quick question. Um, what does FF and E stand for?
FF and E is sort of an, it's an interesting term acronym that is second nature to Josh and I, but it's furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. So, yeah, with, with, non-fixed assets, things that aren't part of the construction process that we'll, we'll buy to, to replace the facilities. There are components of the construction budgets that are FF and E, but we also, if you recall, have a large component in every campus to replace furniture throughout all of your campuses, so, uh, it is a hefty budget and it's something that we'll, we'll knock out. One of the things there that's sort of just a straight line, and it's sort of nebulous right now, we'll be working with, uh, your safety folks, Ms. Mode, Brian, to begin to look at cameras, access, things that we want to move forward with quickly to identify and remedy safety challenges at your campuses, and so that line will start to take shape as well as we move forward with some of those things in advance of the renovation work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin, okay. All right. And that's gonna take us through Section 7, and we've already done Section 8A, so we're gonna move to Section 8B, which is to discuss and consider approval for the Tarrant County Appraisal District's Board of Directors.
So we have a total of 22 votes, which is very small because we're a small entity in Tarrant County. There are massive entities that have a lot more votes, but you have several candidates that you had their bios on for the appraisal board. Uh, if you'd like to cast those 22 votes, you can do it for one individual, you can do it for multiple individuals, uh, whoever caught your fancy that you feel like deserves, you know, to be on the board, uh, it's kind of the, how you want to do those votes.
I think last year, we cast them off as one person.
We did. That would be my recommendation.
We did.
So I think it's a good idea.
Is that person...
Does anyone have any recommendations as to who we should be, um, casting our votes for?
I have two names, so that goes against what we did last year, so...
And what names might they be?
That was Jared Miller and Vince Puente, I think is how you pronounce his last name.
So that was Jared Miller, and what's the other name again?
Puente? P-U-E-N-T-E?
Very last one, I think.
Oh.
Second to the last.
Yeah, second to the last.
Vince Puente.
In the packet.
Mr. Owens, if you look at the, uh, final ballot, there's this whole list of them. It's on, it's a different attachment.
Thank you. I was fixed by the, um, by the bios. Okay. So recommendations are for Mr. Jared Miller and, um, Mr. Puente's.
Mr. President?
Yes.
My recommendation is for Gary Lasada.
Gary Lasada?
Uh-huh.
So there are three names that we have, um, that we have recommendations for. Are there any other names that...
He always comes and talks to us on behalf of Lasada.
Yeah. Mr. Lasada's the gentleman who, someone comes and speaks about him.
Oh, yeah? He comes each month, like, every year he comes and talks.
I'm actually surprised he's not here today.
No, because he came last week, first month. He came last month.
But last year, he came the day we voted him, too.
Oh, did he? Maybe they're not allowed to do it the day you vote.
Right, because he usually comes to speak to us about someone else. So this time...
It's him?
It's him.
I thought it was...
So I'm good with him.
Well, that, that would be my only, if he is on behalf of Gary Lasada, that would be my only, I'm, I'm indifferent to every single one, but my only little nod is at least he made the effort to come and speak on his, like, that's more than...
Anyone else?
Anyone else, so that's my only thing.
He did come and speak on his behalf and not again.
Vince.
In the packet.
Mr. Jones, if you look at the, uh, final ballot, there's just a list of them.
Okay.
It's on, it's a different attachment.
Thank you, I was, I was fixed by the, um, by the bios. Okay. So recommendations are for Mr. Jared Miller and, um, Mr. Fuentez.
Mr. President?
Yes.
My recommendation is for Gary Lasada.
Gary Lasada? So there are three names that we have, um, that we have.
Isn't he the one that always comes and talks to us on behalf of Lasada?
Yeah.
Mr. Lasada's the gentleman who, someone comes and speaks about him.
Oh, yeah, okay.
He comes each month, like every year he comes and talks.
I'm actually surprised he's not here today.
No, because he came last week, first month. He came last month.
But last year he came the day we voted him too.
Oh, did he? Maybe they're not allowed to do it the day you vote.
Right, because he usually comes to speak to us about someone else. So this time.
It's him?
It's him.
I thought it was.
So I'm good with him.
That, that would be my only, if he is on behalf of Gary Lasada, that would be my only, I'm, I'm indifferent to every single one, but my only little nod is at least he made the effort to come and speak on his, like, that's more than.
Anyone else?
Anyone else, so that's my only thing.
He did come and speak on his behalf and not against him, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, because he's.
I thought so, he said I'm here on that, because I remember him saying.
Okay, if he said that on.
So we've had only one?
Wait, wait.
Correct me though, I mean, I could be wrong.
The gentleman that comes to speak spoke on his behalf? Or he was the person that came?
I thought he was on his behalf.
The person that came, came to lobby for Mr. Lasada? Okay, he lobbied for him.
Yeah, I don't think he's running for the board.
So the only person that came here came to speak on behalf of Mr.?
Of someone else, right.
Is that how y'all remember it? I.
That's how I remember it.
That's, that's what I was thinking, so that's my only input into the consultation is at least that's the one remark for someone. That's more than I can say for anyone else in the packet, or whatever that's worth for anyone else, if anything.
So then if we have agreed that we're going to, um, uh, submit all of our, 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 our points for one person, then it's a matter of which one? Okay, so the recommendations are Mr. Miller, Mr. Fuentez, and Mr. Lasada. And the only other information I can give towards that would be that the only person who has solicited, uh, came to L S D for, uh, our votes would be Mr. Lasada. Okay? So what I will do is I'll ask, uh, for each name, and if you, uh, will raise your hand, say which one of these you would like to give your, um, uh, your, our votes to. Uh, I'll count and see if there's one clear person that has more than anyone else, and then maybe that will be the recommendation that we make, okay?
So we're just voting for one?
Yes, for one, just for one, okay? So we'll start with, uh, uh, Mr. Miller, how many of us would like to, um, support Mr. Miller, raise your hand?
I do.
So we have one for Mr. Miller, okay? How many of us would like to, uh, support Mr. Fuentez, raise your hand?
I can only vote once.
Okay, and how many of us would like to, uh, support Mr. Lasada, raise your hand? Mr. Lasada has almost everyone on the board, so, uh, if that's the case, for us to, uh, support Mr. Lasada, I think I need a motion.
Mr. President, make a motion to support Mr.?
Cast twenty-two votes for.
Cast twenty-two votes for.
And sign.
Sorry, I'm sure it's somewhere. Okay, uh, make a motion, cast twenty-two votes for Mr. Lasada and sign resolution declaring these results.
As motion by Mr. Lasada.
Second.
And second by Ms. Beagle, that's all in favor of supporting Mr. Lasada with our twenty-two ballots, let us know by aye.
Aye.
Any votes? So that, um, support for Mr. Lasada for all twenty-two of our ballots has. All right, okay. We're now going to section eight C, which is to discuss and consider approval of the Kinnedale High School renovation design. Josh, welcome back.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Brian, do we have a?
Yes. All right, good evening, uh, good to see all of you again. I'm excited to share the progress that we've made on the Kinnedale High School, uh, renovation addition project through schematic design. Going to hop to the site plan, so this, um, really the reference here is to show you where scope is happening on the site. Uh, there's a three key elements to pay attention to, one is, uh, note number ten, that's on the west side of the fieldhouse and indoor practice facility. It's an existing gravel drive, uh, with drainage issues, and so we will be paving that drive and addressing the drainage issues as it is on the west side of the building and wraps down to the south side of the indoor practice facility. Uh, the two other items, uh, is a fine arts storage building, uh, addition that we're proposing to be at the backside of the performing arts center. Uh, and then the last piece is the culinary addition. Um, I want to speak a little bit more regarding the culinary addition, we explored three different locations as we were analyzing the site and where best to place the culinary addition. Uh, one was on the backside of the building, uh, one was in the alcove, uh, that you see between the kind of the two wings on the northern end of, uh, the high school, uh, just adjacent to the existing, uh, kitchen area. And the third location was where you're seeing here, um, to the southwest side of the performing arts center. So we ran into some challenges, uh, placing it on the backside of the building, one being utilities, uh, back there and knowing that we've got to keep the school operational as we're working through construction. Um, the other issue as we talked to the chef, he was concerned about the distance, the travel distance from the culinary department to like the library, uh, where he may have an event and food, keeping food warm. Uh, so that one kind of fell down as far as the priority list goes. Um, we ran into challenges as well trying to place it within the alcove that I mentioned, um, even more utilities in that area. Uh, so that was not very favorable for that location. Also, if the district ever needed to expand the kitchen in the future, we've now kind of pigeonholed you into that location where you, you don't have as much flexibility. A benefit to placing it at the performing arts center is, um, being, being able to use the lobby space as a dual purpose. Uh, so we have the culinary department, they can cook meals, prep meals for possibly an event that's happening in the lobby space. So it's not a space that we're constructing as part of the addition, we're utilizing a space that already exists within the district and the campus.
I'm sorry, would you go through that again? You're a number, you're speaking of, instead of doing it on number six and seven, you're proposing to do it on number eight, what you just talked about with culinary, or no?
No, so.
Okay.
Three separate kind of major scopes happening on the side, um.
So when you talked about the culinary, two is the high school, six is culinary addition, seven is culinary patio.
Yes.
You're talking about that, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, so instead of doing that, you're proposing to move it to eight?
No.
No.
No, so what you're seeing here is kind of where we landed as the best case scenario of where to place the addition.
Okay.
I was just explaining the, kind of how we arrived, because you may have seen previous information possibly that it was gonna be on the backside of the high school. We vetted that, utilities are an issue, uh, it wasn't very conducive to place it on the backside of the high school. And so just to clarify, what you're seeing here is where, uh, it's being currently proposed on the southwest side of the performing arts center. Because of the advantages that it has in dual purpose of the lobby space, uh, and being able to utilize that for events that the culinary could support.
Is culinary, the performing arts center is number eight, or no?
Performing arts center is number two, and then our culinary addition that we're proposing is number eight.
Oh, okay. Gotcha, I'm with you now.
Sorry, culinary addition is number six, and because of that site configuration, we are looking at a possibly culinary patio noted as number seven in that area. Um, you'll see some red lines indicating service gates, uh, parking gate is number nine, that's to help control the flow of traffic. If there is an event at the culinary, we're not allowing anybody to just flow into the high school site. Um, we're controlling that traffic to be at the performing arts center for the culinary specifically.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
You're good, north, south, east, and west goes beyond me, but on your map, I can follow with the numbers.
Okay.
So clear my confusion if you don't mind, what actually is a culinary patio?
Um, so we're looking, I'll, I'll have a floor plan that's a little bit more detailed of the culinary addition that you can see, but as of right now and talks with the shelf chef, it may be a window that somebody could walk up to, to order or get food. And then it could be an area that has tables and chairs for somebody to sit at and eat outside of being within the actual space.
If they were open up to community sales or if they were, community could come up and make uncertain days or whatever and purchase certain items, have a place to, like a little albor bistro.
That's what I assumed, I just didn't, I was wanting to make sure it's not just off. That's not leaving me confused.
There we go. It was really blurred. Um, so this is the high school floor plan, uh, each color represents, uh, scope that's happening within the building. So I'll start with, uh, the yellow color, that is where we have kind of the more intense renovation happening. And when I say that, I mean, uh, removing walls, reconfiguring of the space to accommodate the new program. Um, so there's a few spaces at the back of the building to accommodate a new locker room. Um, and so that's, that's at the back area that you see that's yellow. Uh, and then relocating the laundry room and ISS room, that's the area that you see, uh, on the, uh, left side at the back there. Um, and so that's reconfiguring some spaces to accommodate those, uh, relocation of those spaces to accommodate a locker room. Art classroom is currently divided into two classrooms, uh, there's a storage room and office space that separates those two art rooms. Those will come down to make one larger art classroom, so that's the scope that you see there. Uh, CNA, EMT skills lab that you see noted there, um, that is where culinary is currently located. So as we move that program out, the space will be renovated for, uh, the CNA, CNA, EMT program. The green color, uh, really gets into finishes, so it's, it's the flooring material, it's the paint within the room. Uh, there's some specific items listed there for the lecture hall regarding the sound system. Uh, the weight room will have an HVAC upgrades, science classrooms will be focused on updating the fixtures within that space. Uh, and then the purple color gets into finishes within the hallways, uh, painting, ceiling replacement as needed. And then the blue, uh, is restroom and locker room finish updates. And then there's a list of just kind of general things that didn't fall within one of those categories, uh, MEP and technology wise of upgrades we're making in the lecture hall. Um, and then exterior things that didn't show up on the overall site plan, scope wise.
At the, uh, I think that's the southern end of the building, at the end of the we, of the, uh, English hallway there, what is that tiny room being?
The yellow room.
The yellow room that's off by itself?
That, um, the corridor just adjacent to that is tight, um, and so the scope there is to increase the width of that corridor for easier access, and so it affects that room to the left.
Got you.
I believe that's a closet, isn't it?
Yes. At least it.
Not a closet, but it's like a teacher break book or something.
That, that room right there.
HD collection.
Could you quick, could you briefly talk about the equipment replacement like scoreboard, intercom bell system, and the MEP technology upgrade?
Yeah, so each of the scoreboards, I believe there's two scoreboards in each of the gyms, those will be replaced as part of our scope. Um, let's see, the MEP, the bell system, intercom system, so, uh, we walked a few weeks ago with my technology consultant, so that'll be a full upgrade of the system, uh, at the campus. And then as MEP and technol, as MEP is getting into it, there may be some upgrades that are necessary per code as we're, you know, getting into this scope more. So that's what those line items are speaking to.
Thank you.
So this, uh, this gets into a little bit more detail as far as placement goes, um, so we have the performing arts center, that's not in our scope, but you see where the culinary addition, uh, is currently kind of placed along that side of the building, as well as the fine arts storage building out back.
Josh, was there another concern where as far as new construction has to have a space that, so tying it into the performing arts, that that can be explained?
Staging?
Yeah, I mean, so this really, the fine arts storage building was always planned to go out back, and so really we've isolated those two major new construction pieces into one area, and so it's, it's easier for the contractor, we'll have one staging area that's pretty close to this as opposed to having it split across the side. Uh, so really, it, yeah, it worked out for convenience, uh, ease of kind of isolating where that major construction is happening instead of having it spread out.
I'm sorry, with the culinary addition, having kids and having enough space for a safe, you know, without having to do the, uh, extra stuff that we. Storm shelter, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, so twenty fifteen IBC implemented storm shelter requirements for e-occupancy buildings when you have more than fifty occupants in a building. Um, our culinary addition is at forty-eight occupants, uh, so we had initial discussion with the city talking about the requirements. Basically, they just said, you know, come back when you have a plan to show us how you, what your occupant load is. Uh, so that is a meeting that we'll have as we go into design development, uh, now that we have a working floor plan to show them how we are, uh, under those, that requirement. So this will not be a storm shelter. And again, a little bit more detail, so this is, I'll just say this is a conceptual plan, this is where we got to in SD after a lot of conversations working with the district, the chef, uh, as well as our food service consultant. Um, so two kind of culinary labs with a wire wash in the middle, and then the support spaces planned north with an office, dry storage, restroom, locker room, cooler, freezer, and then you'll see off to the left, the bistro and kind of corridor connection, how that ties back into, uh, the existing performing arts center. So still working on exact placement, this will be updated, I have no doubt when I come back and show you a design development. There will be some adjustments, this is, like I said, a concept that we got to, so we'll have further meetings going into design development. Questions here?
I have a question about the occupancy, I hear the rationale why we're doing the forty-eight versus the fifty. Um, is that gonna pigeonhole us as to participation then in that, in that program?
No, actually this, um, this is probably more than what we anticipated that we would be able to provide going into it, if I'm being honest. After we met with the chef, he had a lot of ideas, obviously, and that, that's good, it's just we also have a budget, right? Um, and so we are, we're approaching, checking a lot of the boxes that he requested, and so, no, it's, it's not pigeonholing you. It's really just how it worked out really well.
And we're talking occupancy per class, right, fifteen, forty-eight, or?
It's how, it's how we run occupancy, which is primarily to calculate how much egress outside of the building we have to provide, plumbing fixtures. It's not T A occupancy counts that tend to be less, we're going worst case scenario as far as our occupants.
So he's gonna have multiple classes, so.
Yeah.
Got you.
And I'm assuming, um, knowing what that space looks like, um, and since you're adding to the side of the existing performing arts, I'm, I'm assuming, um, that just leaves a really narrow space for a drive-through and the parking?
So it will require a little bit of rework of the drive, um, so you see here.
I'm envisioning that huge fine arts trailer that goes through there to park.
So we've, we've planned for that.
Okay.
Uh, we're aware that it still has to make its turns and everything, as to the civil engineers working on radiuses and all that to still accommodate for that.
You're asking exactly what I asked.
Yes.
Well, yeah, because I've been there in the line to drop off my band student and see, and I'm like, oof, so now envisioning the, the building extending out that far. Um, so, but of course she thought of it, and I'm glad I'm not the only one asking, so.
No, you're good. And then this is the concept floor plan for the fine arts, uh, storage building. Uh, really the request here was to have a music storage space and a theater storage space separated, uh, as well as an instrument storage that can be climate controlled, and so that's what you're seeing here. Uh, right now, the plan is for it to be a pre-engineered metal building, uh, so it'll have potentially some masonry down low, so it ties back into the existing buildings and then a metal panel. Um, that's a cost-effective way to approach this storage building with access with overhead, large overhead doors to be able to gain it, uh, access into and out of that space to store things.
That's gonna be really helpful also. Ooh.
So these are, uh, finishes, uh, so my interior designer met with, uh, the leadership team, uh, presented several options, and this is kind of where we've landed. So the upper left corner has, uh, the new field paint, uh, with, as well as some accent paint colors, the new carpet, where we'll be utilizing that in the lower left corner. Uh, the cabinetry and countertops is the next area over. Uh, the multi-purpose room flooring, so that's, again, it's a multi-purpose space of trying to find the right flooring for that area that works for all the programs that are being utilized in that area. Um, so this is where we've landed so far. The upper finishes here for restrooms, wall tile, partitions, uh, the restroom wall tile, a green accent, new rubber base throughout the campus will be black. Uh, the door trim, door frames will be black, uh, really updating and freshening the look similar, similar to what we did at the early childhood center. LVT flooring, so anywhere we have, uh, VCT, like we approached the early childhood center, VCT will be coming out, uh, because it does have to be waxed, LVT does not, so there's that maintenance component.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the LVT proposed here, gray with an accent of green, and then the restrooms, we're looking at a resinous type flooring, uh, that has a gray-green fleck to it, and then the CNA, EMT clinic curtain in the upper right corner.
That is a solid floor, so it's no.
No grout lines, uh, easier to maintain. I think we're looking, uh, at that in the art, new art studio as well.
That's good.
And then lastly is, is the schedule, so we're in November, uh, with schematic design. Uh, I will come back in February to show you a design development progress and update. Uh, we wrap up construction documents in April of next year, and then we get into permitting, bidding, with construction starting around the summertime of next year, taking us into about this time of November twenty twenty-five. I will say, getting ABG on board, the contractor, we will start vetting this more, uh, as far as the construction timeline goes, uh, to get their input as well. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On slide number eight. Looking at the theater and music storage here. Uh, oh, I guess that's not my slide number eight, my slide number eight's just the two. That one, no, the next one.
No, the next one.
It's a little delayed.
That, that's the one. That, that's the one.
Yes.
Is that supposed to be a driveway around the building? Are they gonna be backing their vehicles up to these doors? Is that a loading dock? What, what?
This area?
Yeah.
The front, the left side too, I think.
So this.
See the.
Well, that's parking.
This is the existing drive.
The side, that's the side of the building.
Okay. So someone spoke, are we, are we expecting people to back up to that?
So the plan right now, after talking with both the theater instructor and music, is that they would utilize, they could back up along this drive to unload, or if the trailer's not parked here, they could back into here to unload and get to either overhead door to get into their space.
Okay.
This is the existing trailer parking space, and this is the existing drive at the back of the building.
I just.
So we're adding, we're adding the flat work here to connect back to those areas.
So it's gonna be a sidewalk for it?
It'll be a sidewalk, and this aligns back to a door that's on the backside of the performing arts center. So if they're coming out of one of those storage rooms or areas at the back of the building, they can come across the drive and get to the new building.
Are we expecting people to be able to drive up to the theater side of that?
I don't think so.
I'm just, no?
No, nobody should be, I guess, hop, we're not, we're not intending them to hop the curb. We're not providing a curb cut or anything for them to be able to pull back into this.
They should be able to pull up on the curb and just offload right there by that door, that's what you're saying, so.
I'm just curious, I don't know if this is supposed to house stuff for the theater kids at the junior high, and maybe they need to pull up and take something, I, you know.
Right.
We can have those discussions. This is, again, where we got to in concept with schematic design. We'll have another round of meetings with all the key players in design development, now that we have a plan and it's located on the side to get their feedback. So if we need to make an adjustment, we can talk through that with them as well.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, nothing else? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
It's great to start seeing things on paper that.
We need to, we have action.
There is an action item on this one.
So there's preliminary action item request or requirement here? And so I will entertain a motion regarding that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the design for improvements at Kennetle High School as presented.
Second.
And it's motion by Mr. Vigil, and second by Mr. Glovier. All in favor of that motion, if you know by eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And none opposed, so that motion passes unanimously. Awesome. Okay, so that takes care of section number eight, and we now have section number nine, that's the superintendent's report. Next to you, Mr. G.
All right, so you have the district enrollment numbers sitting currently at twenty-eight, forty-seven. We're down four students from last year. We have sixteen open enrollment transfers so far. Our attendance numbers, we were down a little bit for the second six weeks. Just brought the average down to ninety-five point one five, but we're still well above what we have been. We're still tracking to stay in that ninety-five area, which is what we're, you know, we're, as Mr. Kegel said, we like to be ninety-six, ninety-seven percent, but we'll take ninety-five, because that's pretty much above the state average, so we'll take that for right now. So we have seen improvements there, which is good, it's our efforts are riding there. As far as our new housing developments, our numbers, we're starting to see some starting to show in from, or come in from the town and, not from nice, nice landing, but we're seeing more from the Agnewia Hills starting to show up, so we are trying to see, see some numbers increasing there. And then, any questions on the attendance or the enrollment numbers?
None here.
Yeah. Okay, all right, and so then, the next thing would be the Thompson Leadership Institute. So, just went for the third round, back in the November thirtieth, or in early December, we'll be back there for the fourth round. But once we get back from the holidays, it's gonna come very quickly, so I need to start letting Ashley know how many of you plan on going to the February, envisioning one. And, you know, I, I kind of get it, need to know your dates and times, so that, or your thoughts. We're gonna be there on the sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth, so that's Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And it'd be in Austin. How many of you are thinking that you are gonna be in attendance for that?
I'm planning on being there.
Four, five, six, seven, all of it.
Okay.
All right, so we will start looking at rooms and looking at where we can get that done, so.
So sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, that's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so you're saying fifteenth, sixteenth, it's February, right?
Well, it has been Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so they're saying for this one it's different.
No, fifteenth is February is just Thursday, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
So it's the fifteenth at that?
So sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, or what days, I'm sorry.
So the sixteenth is Friday. So it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
I thought you said Thursday, Friday.
Well, I said every other session has been, so I didn't, I had to look at the calendar to see what exact days these go on, so it would be Friday, Saturday, so.
So this is Friday, Saturday, Sunday, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
All right. So that's, that's good to know there. And you'll kind of see what we've been doing while we're, we're there, and pretty intensive sometimes. The other thing, we just did the state of the district address for the Chamber of Commerce Wednesday. Fairly well. Ms. Blesz was there, so, how'd I do? No pressure. Okay, Dr. Boo was there, Ms. Boldy was there, I mean, so I think, I think overall, we're all right. Of course, we, we get to go along with Fellowship Academy, of course, you know, we're anti-voucher and they're pro-voucher, so it's interesting to listen to the different spilling things, which, you know, I, I make no bones about the fact that I'm going to speak out against what's going on in public education and the fight that we, we continue to battle, and so I'm, I'm pretty vocal. Senator King's representative was there, she, she heard what I said, so, I mean, we need to keep, keep it going. Tomorrow, there's supposed to be a big, start debating House Bill One in the House floor. Need to keep talking to them. Cooks, I, I sent you the stuff that Representative Cook sent to us to get input, I'm still waiting here. I'd like to talk to him tomorrow, probably gonna talk to him tomorrow before, hopefully before everything starts taking place at the Capitol. But, you know, our position is still that this is not good for public education. So, you know, they're, they're predicting that with, what they're saying that, that by next year, they put it in now, by next year, it's gonna be two, another two billion dollars to fund vouchers. Well, where's that money coming from?
It'll be another, what?
Two billion with a B?
For, to fund vouchers. Where's that money coming from? And then with some of the runs that they sent us, what I'm looking at is that they're predicting a three percent loss or a five percent loss, you know, that, but the money that we're gonna give from House Bill One seems to equal what we're gonna be leaving in a three to five percent loss. So how are we getting ahead with money? It's a wash, and so we're not getting any additional money, we're supposed to be replacing the money we lost by them creating the vouchers. So, there's no win for us in that, so that's one of the things I'm gonna be talking to them about. So, I don't know what your perspective is and what you've seen, but, you know, send me your thoughts and I'll convey those to them. Or you can pay them yourself by contact, yeah. All right? That's pretty much my report, so. Anything else?
Sorry.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you for the update, Mr. G, we appreciate that.
I'll get through my stuff.
I'm sorry.
I have some thoughts, I'll get them to you.
All right, so that moved now to section ten, this is our board discussions. So for section ten A, before we get into ten, you know, we had talked once before about joining the one group, so now we have a, a request to consider joining a second group, so.
So we are members of TASB, obviously, which is, that's the next item of our renewal with TASB. But there had been brought up to look at a, I believe, black, which is the second one, sorry, the Black School Board members, Texas Caucus Black School Board members. But then we have also got letters from the MASBA and TSLBA. I'm sorry, I don't know exactly what those.
TLSBA.
TLSBA.
Association, Mexican-American School Board Association.
And so Ashley had created kind of a spreadsheet to break down the benefits of one or the other, both. I know scholarships had come up at one point, you know, that they offer scholarships. Well, one of them offers two per district annually, with the other one, it's five, five thousand dollars, but it's competitive, and you don't, there's no guarantee that your district's gonna get one, so, you know, those were some of the things I had to look at. Plus, what are the other things you do? You can still get continuing education credits through these organizations as well as through TASB. So it's, those are decisions that you've got to work with, and that's on you, so, you wanna do.
Is there a recommendation from the superintendent on which one of these two, the MASBA?
I, I would say if you're gonna join one, and do it to benefit our students, and the two per district sounds better to me than two scholarships per district. Now, they're gonna be lower amounts of scholarships, obviously.
They're hundred dollar scholarships. They're one hundred dollar scholarships. So they gave out ten thousand, three hundred last year.
I mean.
The other one gave out twenty thousand.
At the end of the day, I, I mean, we talk about diversity and inclusion, and the Mexican-American School Board Association is really only covering one country in Latin America.
Thank you for saying that.
I'm just saying, there's a lot of, you know, Texas Latinos is a much larger group of people. And I just feel like that the Texas Latino School Board Association, while may have smaller scholarships, it's got two. I know it's a newer organization, created in the last two years, but.
It's bigger than.
It, it's already bigger than the Mexican-American School Board Association, thank you. And I just, I don't know, when we talk about these things, I just think, if we're gonna talk about it, let's put our money where our mouth is, let's do that one.
I think Sean just totally took everything I was gonna say, I was just gonna bring it differently, maybe not all Hispanics or Mexicans, and it's time we let it in and read them, so I would definitely go over to Texas Latino School Board.
I'll just try to keep this meeting moving.
Yeah, but I will, thank you, because you read my mind.
I, I support all of this, I mean, I really do. However, for me, I won't be able to vote, I'm gonna improve myself with making my daughter receive a scholarship from one of these organizations, so.
Okay.
I don't want, I don't wanna be biased on this one, so.
Okay.
But I think one of these will work for us, I think so.
So we take a look at the two that were presented to us. I've heard more support, or only support, from those that are gonna be willing to participate, that the Texas Latino School Association would be the one that would be better for us to join, if we decide to join one, so. Am I, am I understanding the will of the board?
Yes. I think that's more inclusive.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
So we're discussing this now to vote at our next meeting on this, are we?
I don't think it needs a vote.
Are we just gonna say we're gonna.
Direction to.
He's directing, doesn't.
Idea what your thoughts are.
So I'm with that.
Make those decisions, then.
Just one more, for the clarification, because I agree, that was much more inclusive. So I do see that if we do the Texas Latino School Board Association, they don't have a conference, but you're saying we still can get CE's through that organization as well?
They do credits, city classes.
They do, they do, I think they do.
They do what? Okay, so there's still CE opportunities there, scholarships for the students are more inclusive, okay, although not a conference. Yeah.
Well, I think on their website, they said not a conference, yet.
Yet, yeah.
It's still relatively new.
And I, just full disclosure too, for both, I have looked into both of these previously, and I am on their email list, sir. And while they don't have, while at least the TLSBA doesn't have, and same for the other, I think, too, that one doesn't have a conference, but they host events at conferences too, to help, to have a space to, yeah.
I feel like we've seen them both at SLI in the summer, so, yes.
Okay, all right, great, all right. And then ten B, this could basically continue down the same line, we had spoken about considering the Texas Caucus of Black School Board members before, and we decided not, just to hold off, and since we're talking about making, you know, joining one, it's an opportunity to join the other one as well. We're not considering a second organization with that, we're only considering one, which would be the Texas Caucus of Black School Board. And make sure of understanding, this is joining, the board will be joining that, so each and every one of us has an opportunity to participate in each and every one of the events that all they may have together. So, good there?
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
All right, so we now go to ten C, which is discuss TASB renewal.
So our TASB renewal, there's, the reason I'm just saying this is because there's been some controversy with TASB, with some of the, with the national association school boards and political, political mess that that's created, and so they're writing, they wrote a letter, you receive the letter, you have the package of what benefits they offer. You have all of our policies from TASB, I don't see any reason not to renew with them, I'm not, you know, I'm not into all this politics of, who you said what, who did what, but the reality is, as with TASB, we get a lot of our stuff from TASB, so. I'm fine with renewing it as long as y'all are, and hopefully sure that everybody feels the need is there.
I'm good with renewing TASB, I think we'll get different perspectives from the other organizations, so. If there's, the ones we just talked about, yeah, so if there's something that there, if there's something that we need to address, we'll get a different perspective from each group, and then as a board we can go.
I think we're definitely gonna get more benefits from TASB, they've been around for longer. There is a new group that's trying to rival TASB, but I have not heard great things about them. So I, I'd rather keep us going with what we got, so that we don't have to.
Get in broke.
I think we know what we get, right? You know, I.
Yeah.
Does TASB perfect now?
Team broke to fix it, to reinvent the wheel.
I also think TASB has their, their tentacles in a lot of different things, and sometimes I think that creates some issues. And so I think we, we stayed pretty well, just following in line with some of the other districts that have joined into all those things, and I think we're fine. Yeah, America is part of our infrastructure.
All right, all right, so ten D, it's upcoming meeting dates and things, I think we had talked about the December date already.
So we're doing the Thursday, which would be the fifteenth before, fourteen, sorry, fourteen, fourteen, I thought. I am off, sorry for my calendar, my head calendar. The fourteenth, Thursday, the fourteenth, six, five.
That is what I have?
That's what I have, yes.
All right, so we're good with that, we'll have one meeting in the month of December, and that will be on the fourteenth.
Just one meeting.
Great, all right, then that's moved to the section eleven, which is personnel.
Gee, you can read the resignation of retirees and the hiring personnel, really don't have any details to go through. Ms. Duncan is retiring from the high school, she's been in it for a very long time. That's, you know, I hate to see people leave, but I, she's been here a long time, and, you know, she wants to go, she, I think in her letter, it kind of says that she wants to go rest, take some rest, so. Other than that, we just need to go into a closed session to discuss evaluation.
All right, so, nothing else, that takes care of eleven A and eleven B. So our next step will be to go into closed session, and I think it is seven eleven, but when we take a five-minute break, let the union lead to go to the restroom, take that five-minute break, then we will reconvene. So at seven eleven, we will adjourn for, take a five-minute session, five-minute break, right? All right, time now is seven twenty-five, we are returning from our break. So we are now back in session, we are going to forego the closed session for this particular meeting, okay? So at this point, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn this meeting and get up out of here.
Mr. Glovier, I accept that motion, and we are adjourned at time of seven twenty-five and forty-five seconds.